Ready to go? I call this regular meeting of the Uba City City Council to order December 7, 2021. Governors declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. While the governor recently issued executive order N-07-21, which lifted certain orders and associated restrictions, there are still public health directives in place. The executive order N-08-21 also allows local legislative bodies to continue to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public health and well-being are the top priority for the City of Uba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. This meeting is utilizing the Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions and answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate the public comment. On your device, the question and answer section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answers portion of the app and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on during the public comment of each item. Staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Espendola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
I was choked on my gum. Mr. City Attorney, would you mind reading closed session items for us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are four items on closed session. Items A and C are public employee appointment employment pursuant to government code, Section 54957, for both the interim city manager and the city manager positions. Item B and D are conference with labor negotiations pursuant to government code, Section 5497.6, city negotiator Mark Boomgarden and Vice Mayor Shaw. The employee positions are interim city manager and city manager. Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Seeing or hearing none? Anybody online?
No public comment.
Finally getting it right. Adjoining to closed session now. Excuse me. We will be moving into closed session now. Here we go. Jackie, can we start? Are we okay now?
Okay.
He's bigger than me. I'm not saying anything. All right. Last time. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Uba City City Council to order December 7, 2021. The governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. While the governor recently issued executive order N-7-21, which lifted certain orders and associated restrictions, there are still public health directives in place. Executive order N-08-21 also allows local legislative bodies to continue to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are the top priority of the city, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. Meeting's utilizing the Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the question and answers functionality of the tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the question and answer section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answers portion of the app and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on during public comment of each item. Staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by the council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Espendola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
All right. Thank you all for being here this evening. This was truly a great evening of ceremony, and we'll get to that here shortly. A few items of business first, though, and we are very, very blessed to have Pastor Allen F. Hurl, a care pastor at Bayside Church, Blue Oaks Campus, and retired naval captain. He will lead us in the invocation and inspiration. After he gets done, we'll have the posting of the colors by a joint Uba City Police Department and Uba City Fire Department color guard, and then we'll be led in the pleasure of allegiance by Matt Laughlin of our own City of Uba City staff. So Pastor Allen, please stand.
It's an honor for me to be with all of you VIPs. Thank you for the privilege of being able to ask God's blessing over this meeting, over Uba City at this time in history and the city council as you journey on into 2022. Let's talk with God. Oh God, our Father in heaven, we bow before your majesty and your mystery to thank you for the gift of life, for family and friends, for good times, rough times, and for letting us live at this time in human history. Wow, the challenges are huge. We know there are storm clouds of unrest that are swirling. We know that people are fearful and angry and uncertain. And what a night for this meeting, the 80th anniversary of that day we know as the day of infamy. Oh God, you have shown us through our own journey of history that you do use individuals, and individuals can make a difference for the good, the right, and the true. And in this gathering, midst the gifted, talented, and committed men and women who want to make a difference right here in Uba City, you have raised up good leaders, moral leaders, conscientious, courageous men and women. And we thank you for those who have faithfully served this past year under Mayor Boomgarden's leadership, and for Dave Vaughn as the city manager, and for those that have been on the team. We pray too that you would be with those who take up the baton as the new year dawns, as this new council goes forward by faith and bold commitment to tackle the vision set before them. Grant them courage and kindness, wisdom, keen insight, that they may work together in such a way that the overarching theme, the quality of life, will be achieved for all the people of Uba City and beyond. We ask, oh God, that the goals concerning public safety, infrastructure, business-friendly, and fiscal responsibility will be more than just buzzwords, but will be worked on and through with this council, and they'll be able to look back at the end of the year and say, wow, it's been a great run, and we accomplished many things together to help our community and the people all around us. May each council member be recognized for their integrity, their character, their servant-hearted leadership, humility, and honesty. As the new year beckons, may your best blessing rest and abide on Mayor Shaw, the Mayor Shaw -elect, new city manager, everyone on the council, and the whole community. I pray these things in the name of the one announced as wonderful counselor, mighty God, eternal Father, and prince of peace. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Now we'll have the posting of the colors. Mark play.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a unity of us all.
The city council met in closed session this evening, and before I turn over the report on the closed session items to our city attorney, I want to make an announcement that we, as a city council, have selected Diana Langley to be our city manager. There are a few details to work out, and I'm sure that those will be done in short order. Her term as city manager will begin effective on December the 10th at the end of the business day. But we are very pleased, and Diana's in the audience with us, and she's already received applause, and because she likes applause so much, how about one more time? I know that's a hard act to follow, Shannon, but city attorneys, report on closed session items, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. There are two items I'd like to report on. The first item is, by unanimous vote, the city council has appointed Diana Langley as the city manager effective 5:00 PM on December 10, 2022. The city attorney is directed to bring forth an appropriate agreement at the next regular meeting of the city council on December 21, 2022. There's also an announcement regarding closed session on October 5, 2021. Subject to contingencies, the city council unanimously authorized the submission of a government claim for the California Department of Water Resources and/or the state's failure to comply with an agreement related to the state water project and area of origin settlement agreement, and to initiate litigation should it be necessary. The contingencies have since been met as of this afternoon, and the approval is now final. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Agenda modifications? Anybody? Mr. Kirchner? Nope? All right. Approval of the agenda? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Public communication. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be considered at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Members of the public will have three minutes to speak. Written requests received at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment. I do have a speaker card from Heather Essman, so...
Hello. Good evening, Council. I thought this was going to be after all the... Sorry about that. Usually, I'm just about the only one left in the room, so I'm a bit surprised there's so many people here today. So before I get to the topic that I've written down there, at first, I wanted to thank our city manager. He sent me a very lovely card one time. Thank you very much for all that he's done for the city. I'd also like to thank the mayor. There have been some times that I've been in this meeting where people have gone off on tangents, and you could have done something, but you just let them talk, and I appreciate that. I think that that really helped cool things down, and I think that the city should be very appreciative of your guidance this last year. I'd also like to caution Councilman Shaw to follow in yours and Councilman Harris's footsteps in the last several years. They are big footsteps, and I hope that you can kind of use them as your example. Also, I'd like to thank Brad McIntyre and Rob for a tour that they're going to give... Well, maybe Rob, anyway. So I appreciate that as a commissioner for Parks and Recreation. Main topic that I wanted to talk about today is the sidewalk ordinance. So last time, I couldn't stay. Unfortunately, I had a booster shot, and it just kind of knocked me out, so I had to leave. But I wanted to talk about that, and I don't know if everybody's aware of it right now, but there was an ordinance passed the last meeting that basically states that if you have a tree or something else in your yard that causes the sidewalk to buckle, it is now your responsibility to handle that. I did want to set the record straight as somebody who has a bit of a background in automobile horticulture, that it's not necessarily our fault if the trees buckle the sidewalk. There are typical trees that just happen to be more evasive, and if you're familiar with how trees grow, there are some trees that are taproots, and there are some trees that are more in the vertical. One example would be our wonderful redwoods for the California, the state of California, and these redwoods tend to sprawl out. No matter how you try to water it, that's just the way that they're designed. So there are some trees also that are very invasive, for example, the mulberry tree, which was a favorite for cities, be 20, 30 years ago, until they must have realized that the roots are so invasive, they cause the sidewalks to buckle, and so they decided to switch to other types of trees that aren't as invasive. So for those of you in this meeting that weren't aware of that, I'd just like to find out, or maybe we can... I didn't see if there was a timeframe. Were we given some sort of a kind of a little bit of time before now and the liability sets in? Or is it as of last week? So if anybody were to have a problem right now, it's up to them? I don't know. I didn't quite get that information, so I thought maybe if we can clarify that. And I put in big letters here. If that's a problem, it's not our fault. Thank you.
Can you get together with Ms. Essman and give her the details?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Perfect. Thank you, Heather.
I don't... I don't want a sidewalk, so it's...
Okay. All right. Consent calendar... Oh, Sarah, do we have any... Pardon me. Anybody in the public like to speak this evening? Okay. How about online?
No public comment.
We'll move to the consent counter. All matters listed under the consent counter are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent counter for individual action. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on these consent items? Online?
No public comment.
Okay. Hearing none, I will bring the consent counter to the council for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Move to approve consent calendar item number two.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw, second by councilperson Harris to accept the consent counter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, consent counters approved unanimously. Presentations. I guess I get to announce presentations to the outgoing Mayor Boomgarden. And it says here I'm supposed to go in front of the diocesan.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Jack, can you guys hear... There we go.
Oh, yeah.
I... This is a tremendous honor and privilege for me tonight to be able to present this to you. Up until about four years ago, we kind of knew each other in the community, and then we met on that little thing called the campaign trail. And what has been forged over the past four years is a good friendship. And I just want to let you know, I consider it an honor to be able to present this to you tonight because your history with this community, from working your way up through the fire department, serving as our fire chief, and coming back around not only as a leader in business, but to serve on the council and serve as mayor, shows your love and commitment to this city that you've chosen to call home. And I just want to tell you that we really appreciate you. We appreciate your family and everything, because this is definitely a family commitment. So and so from... I think I can speak on all five of us. Job well done, and thank you. With that, I'd like to present you with a proclamation. You've done about 100 of these over the past year, so... And yours is quite long, because you've done a lot. So Mark Boomgarden, mayor 2020, 2021. Whereas, after being elected to city council in 2018 and serving honorably as a council member for two years, Mark Boomgarden further dedicated himself to the community by serving as mayor of the City of Uba City from 2020 to 2021. Given his contributions to the city during this time and his continued commitment to public service, it is right and appropriate that his personal contributions be recognized, including serving on the Gilizer Drainage District Board, Local Agency Formation District, Bog Stewart MTEA Ad-Hoc Committee, Budget Oversight Ad-Hoc Committee, Uba City Board Screening Committee... You were busy. And whereas, the city council of the City of Uba City priorities include enhancing the quality of life for residents through public safety, physical responsibility, infrastructure, and to be business-friendly. Accomplishments in 2020, 21 include, but are not limited to, an ongoing commitment to maintaining a system of transparency, public engagement, and collaboration, forming ad hoc committees to address the issues of the budget, the Bog Stewart Master Plan, Master Tax Exchange Agreement, Newcombe Ranch Annexation, hosting several community workshops on topics of the Harder Specific Plan and the budget and priorities. And whereas, during his time as mayor, the city was awarded the Walton Avenue Street Improvements Project, SECOG grant, Bridge Street widening to the tune of 2.81 million, state local partnership program grant, and four highway safety program grants. One, improve signal hardware at 38 city signalized intersections for 540,000. Two, installation upgrade of signs, 1.835 million. Three, crosswalk improvements at 15 unsignalized intersections for 193,000. Four, improve signal hardware at 17 state signalized intersections for 510,000. And whereas, many projects and developments occurred 2020 and through 2021, such as the Mayor's Leadership Institute, completion of the Feather River Parkway, adoption to construct a new park on Harder Parkway, purchase of a new ladder truck, new fire engine, CDVG for the new turnouts, authorizing six new firefighter positions, cellular meter retrofit project, and the approval of multiple development projects. That one was really special, the firefighters. The development projects were Hooper Ranch Estates, East Sanborn Estates, Harder Specific Plan, Specific Plan Amendment, and the Development Agreement Amendment rezone. And whereas, Mayor Boomgarden participated in many community events, such as... Such stand out as throwing the first pitch for the Gold Sox opening game, the return of and second year in a row for the Fourth of July Community Fireworks Display and Parade. But most memorable, the queen for a day for Juliana through the Make-A-Wish Foundation in Uba City. And whereas, awards received during the 2020-21 term include the GFOA Distinguished Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting and re-designation as a Tree City USA community. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the city council of the City of Uba City, do hereby extend our appreciation and commend Mark Boomgarden for his dedication and outstanding performance as mayor of the City of Uba City. We hereby urge all residents to join us in recognizing Mark for his contributions and ongoing dedication to our community, done on the seventh day, December 2021, City of Uba City, County of Sutter, and the State of California. As customary, as you yielded that gavel the past year, we'd like to present you with your own gavel as a token so that you can use it around the house. It's something to remember how you guided us this past year. And one of the most memorable things that you did this past year, it had not been done in a long time, was you got as many of the former mayors together for a luncheon, and we want to present you with this from the mayor's brunch that you hosted, and so you can carry these fond memories. And now, Ms. Laura Nichols would like to come up.
Good evening. This is going to be easy, I promise. On behalf of Assemblyman James Gallagher and Senator Jim Nielsen, it is an honor, it is a privilege to be with you tonight, to present you with a certificate of recognition in honor with thanks and congratulations for your service as mayor. As we heard just a moment ago, you have many things to be proud of and have accomplished here in the city. I know you know you've done it with a team of wonderful people that represent all that you believe in, and we really thank you for that commitment and that service to Uba City as mayor, and in future for your endeavors for the City of Uba City. Congratulations.
Now I get to give comments. Thank you for the script. Okay. You know, I thought about preparing a speech, and really, Laura just mentioned it, you know, a person that has the opportunity or the privilege to sit up here is really just one person as a part of a team. And all the accomplishments that were read off, you know, certainly quite a lot, but in reality, the term "we" comes to mind. Not only we as a city council, but we as a city staff and we as a community, because as a community, as a city staff, and as a city council, we all, I think, work very hard to try to do the very best we can for the City of Uba City. But with that being said, there are some individual folks that I think it's important for me to thank, and first and foremost is my wife Karen. She's here in the audience tonight, so can you step up here for a second? While she's coming up, those who have served in public office or on know that you get a lot of phone calls or emails or all kinds of different things at all hours of the day and night, and there's been many, many times that things have been interrupted or I've had to bounce things off of Karen. And I think she thought she was over with all that stuff when I left the fire department, but here I came around to. So her patience, I love you, appreciate this. So her patience, I love you, appreciate this. The next couple people that I need to thank are the folks that spent time with us as city managers. If you're on the city council, your right-hand person at the city is the city manager. And Diana spent that first portion of my mayorship guiding me along and mentoring me, and I very much appreciate that. And then Dave as well. Sorry to see you go. At the same time, congratulations on what I know is a great career opportunity for yourself. But thank both of you for being there when I had to call or had a question, or when you had to tell me even bad news, you broke it to me nicely, so I appreciate that. Shannon, our city attorney, cannot heap enough praise on this guy for his patience with a lot of questions, you know, as a city endeavor to try to do the right thing for the right reasons. And he's the fog line, he's the guardrails, he's the guy that has the best interest of the council and the city at heart. Whenever I had a question, and there were some times when we went through a fairly significant issues, he was there, didn't matter. I called him from a baseball field in Kansas City once, and he picked up the phone, and he was always there. So Shannon, I really appreciate the support, thank you. City staff, well, I can't say enough because all those accomplishments that the vice mayor read, those are really accomplished by city staff. Yeah, we help facilitate that stuff, but all those projects are really led, executed on by the city staff. So for me, we have a fabulous city staff. I've thought that forever, and it even becomes more apparent to me when you're sitting here and people call you. And most of the time they give you praise, every now and then they nick you up a little bit about something, but really to all of the E-team, if you will, and the folks that they lead, just my heartfelt thanks for a job very well done, especially during a COVID time. To the front office staff at City Hall, George and Judy and Sierra. Again, Judy, very patient, I have a full-time job for another few days anyway, and poor Judy, you know, she's trying to coordinate calendars, and she's very patient. So Judy, I see you standing back there, thank you so much for your patience. Sierra, thank you for bringing the right pens for signature all the time and all the help you gave too. And then George, George is the rock, where is he? There he is, back there, you know. I could never get him to not just call, I wanted him to call me Mark, but he went and do it. He was always, hi, Mr. Mayor, hi, Mr. Mayor. Maybe you can, now it'll be councilman again, right? But thank you, all three of you, very, very much. Council, so here's my personal thanks, and then I'll be wrapping this up, to Wade Kirchner, the newest member on the team. This guy hit the ground running, just a great team member, very passionate about the City of Yuba City. One thing I can say about Wade is he listens and he pays attention, and he is a good critical thinker, and he adds a lot to our council, and I couldn't be more pleased to serve with Wade. Thank you, thank you for being here, and I look forward to at least one more year with you. Grace, Grace, she's, what can I say about Grace other than, no, no, I mean that with heartfelt thanks, you know, we don't always agree on things, but at the same time, Grace and I share a lot of commonality on certain things, and it's always very respectful and good conversation, and I enjoy our pology when we get a chance to get together, and I look forward to continuing to do that. I think you bring a lot to our council as well, and the diversity of our council, I think sometimes doesn't necessarily go without. Well, it should be noted is that we respect each other, even though we may have professional opinions that differ with each other, we do so in a respectful manner. Sean Harris, wow, Sean Harris was, he was my left hand, he was, he's on my left side, I was on his right side for a while. He was the first two-term mayor I know in a row, and you know, there's a lot to be learned from his style of leadership. And I did pay attention while I was not only on the council, but served as his vice mayor. And Sean, like the rest of us, I think, really passionate about the city, has some really neat ideas for the future, and I was very happy to see that he got re-elected to our city council because he really truly is a servant leader for the City of Yuba City, and has the city's best interests always at heart, represents us on SECOG, and SECOG is, you know, a pretty important partner of the city, and he do an excellent job, and I've enjoyed being the mayor here and you helping me out, so. Okay, the vice mayor. So as Dave mentioned, you know, our journey started about four years ago, and you know, there's people that come into your life that you, you know, spend time with, and Dave and I, just by virtue of, especially this last year, you know, just crossed paths a lot because it's important for there to be communication between the mayor and the vice mayor, in case something happens to me, he's next up. So, you know, bouncing ideas, sharing ideas, you know, the committees that we've sat on, I think, have been really important committees. And I see Supervisor, actually Chairman Flores and Chairman Conant here. This Master Tax Exchange Agreement that the city and the county struck after, I don't know how many years, how many years was it? Not for us, but I mean, just out there forever, I mean, it was, yeah, yeah, so you know, these types of things where we can build partnerships, and Dave and I, along with Supervisor Conant and Chairman Flores, were able to get that done, and that's going to be a big deal for the city. But back to the vice mayor, he's gonna, he's gonna be a very good mayor, he's extremely passionate about the city. I think that as a person that throws all that they can into not only learning about things, but also doing things and executing things, Dave Shaw's that guy. And you know, it'll be, it'll be nice to not have to be up here in this position for a little while anyway, and watch Dave do the things and have to handle the audience, as S. said. He'll do fine, and I appreciate that. I would close by saying this is that, you know, 2021, as we wrap this up, it's been a challenging year for the city, challenging year for the community. And I think that the ability for us to keep the doors open and provide city services as a city council in partnership with our staff says a lot about the ability of the City of Yuba City to provide quality services and a quality, a special quality of life to its citizens. I'm very proud to have been honored with the opportunity to serve as the mayor. I'm continually honored to be on the city council. We'll see how this districting thing works out, maybe I'll be back, I don't know, we'll see. But I want to thank everybody here tonight, and with that, I'm gonna close off my comments. Thank you for listening. All right, now for the good stuff, the election of our mayor, this is item number five. Any comments from the public on this item? Anybody online?
No public comment.
Okay, so at this point, I'm gonna open up nominations for mayor. Once the nominations are in, we'll be asking for a roll call vote. And so with that, council, I opened it up for nominations for the mayor of Yuba City.
Through the chair.
Mr. Kirchner, please.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint David Shaw as the next mayor of Yuba City.
Second. All right, I have a motion from, I almost called you vice mayor, sorry. Councilperson Kirchner, a second by councilperson Harris, to appoint Dave Shaw, Vice Mayor Dave Shaw, as the next mayor of the City of Yuba City. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Kirchner?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Esmondola? And Mayor Boomgarden?
Absolutely, yes. There you are. We get to do the rotation now. We're gonna try to get this musical chairs thing right here, so bear with us.
Mayor Shaw, I might have been a little bit remiss in this, do you accept the nomination?
We're not rescinding.
You're stuck with it, mayor.
I'm stuck with it, is it okay, honey? Forget I asked, I accept. All right, thank you to my fellow council members, I truly appreciate the honor. We will move on to agenda item six, the election of the vice mayor. And do we have any comments from the public on the election of the vice mayor? Was it, you can't hear me out there? Okay, do we have any public comment from the public on the election of the vice mayor? How about online?
No public comment.
All right, bring this back to the council, and we will open it up for nominations for vice mayor, and then once again, we will ask for a roll call vote once we have a nomination in.
All right, well, through the mayor, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Kirchner as vice mayor of Yuba City.
Second.
I have a first by Councilmember Harris and a second by Councilmember, former mayor Boomgarden, we'll get this all together. Can I have a roll call vote?
Well, you got to ask, Shannon.
Oh, Shannon.
Through the mayor, could Councilmember Kirchner confirm that he accepts the nomination?
We're skipping that tonight.
Yes, he does.
All right, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Boomgarden?
Yes.
Councilmember Esmondola?
Yes.
And Mayor Shaw?
Yes. Congratulations, Mr. Vice Mayor. All right, we will move on to agenda item seven, which is going to be comments from the council members, and we will start with Councilmember Boomgarden, if you have any additional comments, sir.
I do not. Congratulations to the mayor and the new vice mayor, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Esmondola?
I'll try to make it brief because a lot has already been said with our former mayor, and congratulations, Mayor Shaw and Vice Mayor Kirchner, and welcome to have you back, Councilperson Harris and Councilperson Boomgarden. Got that right? Okay, I just wanted to get the rotation correct. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight, this is an amazing opportunity to change of the guard moment, it's such a special moment for all of us to share. I really don't want to add too much more to what's been said, but so much has been accomplished, I believe in one year, we've been able to work together, as our former mayor has said, in so many ways that the accomplishments are a list of a long list, like if you wanted to look at it, it would be a few hours of discussion, and I don't want to belabor because we might have a little celebration impending here soon. But I do wanna, I do wanna say to our former mayor, I want to thank you, Karen, for allowing us to have former mayor Boomgarden be with us, not like he's gone anywhere, but as a mayor, I have to say that I have learned so much from your style and leadership, your approach, how you approach things when they're so difficult and severe in crisis and pandemic issues, your steadiness, your willingness to communicate, your inclusiveness, even when it was far apart in the discussion, you were always able to bring us back together and help us come to some sort of consensus or decision. And without having you in the last year, I believe that maybe we would have not been as well off as we are as a city. And I thank you so much because that has been important, important work, and just the servant leadership that you have every day, and no matter how busy you are, where you're traveling, send you a text, send you a call, you'll respond, and I really, really appreciate that. As one of five, you've done a fantastic job as our mayor, so thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for all that work. And I hope that we can continue that on with our new mayor and our vice mayor, because the quality of communication in any aspect of a job or any relationship is a two-way conversation, and I really hope that we're able to continue doing a lot of that. I want to say thank you to Dave, the other Dave, Dave Vaughn, the last several months that you've been with us here on, the help of everything that you've done as our city manager, you've been instrumental, and I am thankful for the opportunity that you came to our city and were able to seal and put together so many parts of our work. And now that we have Diana, it's just a fantastic continuum. I do want to say one thing that I, I am very much proud of all the things that we've done, one thing that is really close and dear to my heart is that we've been able to celebrate the women that work for the city. In the aspect of COVID and the pandemic in the last two years, it's been really challenging for a lot of women to, you know, continue their professions and continue taking care of their homes and family and other things, and the women here in our city have really stood up and stepped up, and I want to thank them for all of their great work. And I, there's no doubt that without our city staff, one thing that I'm really proud of is that we increased our revenue in probably history time, and we really went through our labor negotiations without too much labor pains, and which is good. It's a big accomplishment to say, and that shows for our community and our city employees how important they also are loyal and value and are part of the community and our city and services. So I just want to say that, you know, to serve our community is not forgotten in me at all, the idea of respect, open communication, and accountability is how I live, and if you interact in any way besides the styes or outside in the chamber or in other opportunities, I think you find that. I ran into a lady yesterday when I was shopping, or actually, wrong day, Saturday, I was shopping at Kate Roberts, if you haven't been there, it's in a fantastic little local shop, and I was standing there buying things for my mom for Christmas, and just started a little conversation, and the conversation was about kindness. She was asking me, how is it that in this world we have forgotten to be kind to each other? And I said, I don't really believe that that's happening, but it is sometimes. She said, if we could be more kind to each other and respect each other and have conversations, even if they're indifferent, let's have those conversations. But she said, people are just not generally kind to each other. And I have learned, serving in the last three years, you have to pick your battles, and you have to know that you can grow a thick skin and be okay and still do what's right for the community. We all serve this city because we believe in serving our city the best. And I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays, and thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you. And Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the accomplishments are far and wide, represent, as the council, the elected body, we kind of a conspicuous face of the city, but I tell you what, former mayor Boomgarden said it best when he says our accomplishments are a team effort and represent the city employees, reflective of their hard work, their dedication, their spouses' dedication, and the network of people we have throughout the community, our men and women in uniform who are out there 24/7 protecting us while the rest of us sleep, risking their lives. And it's, I think it's a good time today to reflect on that, and that's what we all represent, we come together, we all have our different roles here, we step up to the plate 24/7 when necessary to fulfill them, and I think we do it as such a good job, it makes Yuba City a safe place to live, a great place to live, the true meaning of community. You can't go to Starbucks You can't go to Starbucks without seeing one or two or three or four or 10 people you know. And it's great. And that gives you that feeling when you get back in your car, when you shake their hands. And I'm proud to live here, to be from here, to be a part of this council, be a part of this community, proud to work with all four of you, every one of our city staff. You guys have done such a great job. And this evening tonight also represents something that's very unique, not just Yuba City, but in the United States of America. A transition of power, where we are all slapping and joking and shaking each other's hands and having a good time. There's not a shot fired. That might be an extreme example, but I tell you what, it's reality in some places, right? And another time to take, maybe pause and acknowledge that deliberately, that we are lucky and we are in a good place. People of the opinion that we're not being kind to each other, yeah, we have some extreme opinions out there and some people making some poor decisions, how they express them. But the bottom line is, there is the, most people, a majority of people, who want peace and will want tranquility and want the good thing for the right reasons. Even if we have differences of opinion, we do here, I know that. But as long as you're professional and courteous about it, you know, the ball keeps moving forward, and for a good reason. Mark, as mayor, I tell you one thing, many things I'm impressed with you and your leadership style. But you're calm demeanor, man. Because there's so many times I've seen you just really, where I don't think I could have handled it. And I've told you that before. And I know you know that, because I've gotten the kick under the table a few times. But I respect that. And there's many things I respect about Mr. Boomgarden. But that's a very admirable trait, that you have a way to keep the meetings and when people go off completely inappropriately, but yet you're able to keep that calm. And I respect that and thank you for that, and many other things. Dave, welcome to the center chair. Can't wait to see this show. It's going to be good, though. He's going to do a good job. We have a good thing in Wade, of course. Looking forward to some good things from you. And it's your first year here, but I tell you what, you've really, like Mark said, hit the ground running. And we've done some good things, had some good conversations, and I think many more to come. I could go on and on. I'm not going to. Bottom line is, it's about this process. It's about Yuba City. Thank you all for being a part of it with us tonight. And thank you to the city staff, and keep up the good work. Dave, best wishes to you and your new endeavor. And Diana, thank you for saving us. No, you're good. It's all good. Congratulations, Diana. We're looking forward to working with you as well. So I will stop. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll move on to the next item, which is comments from our new Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start by saying, this all started about a year ago when the citizens of Yuba City chose me as the representative, as a part of this body. And it's been an honor to serve with the people that you see before you in this chamber. I'd like to start by thanking people individually. I'll start with Grace. Grace, thank you. When I came on board, I was a freshman, green. And it's always nice to have someone to talk to, share ideas and goals. And those of you that know Grace, know that she has a passion for the homelessness issue in our community, among other things, and the many boards and committees that you serve on, and do it well. So thank you for that. I'm going to move on to Sean. Sean, thank you. Every committee needs a Sean. With Sean, you've got the institutional knowledge and the experience. And my friend, over the last year, I've learned a lot by just looking over there and watching you. And you are the representative that we need on SECOG to represent our city and our community. And also, your passion for the arts is pretty apparent, too. So thank you for all that. And my takeaway is one of your sayings, you can't change what you can't change. And it makes a certain amount of sense. Your sense of humor, always at the right time. So thank you for that, Sean. Moving on to Mark. You know, when people ask me what Mark is like, and I've given this a lot of thought. And one word, one word comes to mind. Gentleman. Mark is a gentle man. And what's been alluded to earlier, sometimes things can get a little heated in here. And everyone looks to that seat. And, man, you've got a lot of patience. And thank you for the time that you put in. It could not have been easy being a mayor during a pandemic. And, by the way, managing a multimillion-dollar company in addition to that, as well as being a father and husband. So thank you for all those things that you've done for our community. Dave, it's been mentioned earlier, you've got big shoes to fill. But I know unequivocally that you are up to that task. I've watched you over this last year, the countless committees, budget oversight, ad hoc, development impact, business retention, that you came up with on your own. Just shows me that your commitment and how important small businesses are to our city. So we're in the right hands right now, my friend. So thank you. I would like to thank the E-Team, our executive team. To Mr. Vaughn, thank you for your service. I always look forward to our morning meetings, and I'm going to miss that. But I know you're on the bigger better, so good luck in your endeavors. But thank you for your service. A lot of things have happened in this community, positive things. We've got a brand-new police chief, and we've picked the right one. So thank you, Brian. In addition to this, I would like to close in thanking my lovely wife for saying, yeah, you could do this. She's my right arm. She's my everything. And my son for putting up with me as well. And my dad, who's in the very back, who'll be 88 years old next month. Thanks, Dad. And I'm looking forward to the future. This is an exciting time to be in these seats in this town and watch this little sleepy town that I grew up in just grow and expand and bring in... It's just an exciting time to be in this town, this city. So I'm going to stop rambling. And David, it's up to you.
Well, it's up to me now. And I'm the only thing stopping us from getting out of here in about four and a half minutes. So I'm going to make it really quick. I'm seeing the heads. So, you know, first of all, and I said a little bit earlier, but it is truly humbling to sit up here. And it's even more humbling, as Sean said, when you sit in the middle seat. Because it is not only the people of the city that thought we were worthy enough to sit in these chairs, but then your colleagues think you're worthy enough to sit in this chair. We're still a council of five, but this is very, very humbling. And I just want to thank the people of Yuba City and my colleagues for giving me the honor to serve as the mayor this next year to start with. So thank you. And as Pastor Allen mentioned earlier, I want to do something that's a little different to start off with, because it's very ironic that the day is the 80th anniversary for Pearl Harbor. And it's really ironic that I've had significant things in my life happen on this same day. This is another event happening on December 7. But I would just ask that we all pause for a moment and pay respect to those that laid down their lives, because what happened 80 years ago and what continues to happen with our men and women today that serve keeps all of that stuff off of our soil here and in other parts of the world. So please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Pastor Allen, I want to say thank you to you first, because during this past year, I've gotten to know you and Charlene a lot better, my wife and I have. And I will tell you, as a veteran, naval captain, pastor, grandpa, friend, you are one of the most gentlest men that I have ever met. You have a heart of gold. And I can't express how much it is for you to be here tonight. It really touched my heart. So thank you, sir. To our administrative team, Judy, Sierra, George, you guys, thank you for everything you guys do for the chambers, keeping us on track. Again, as Mark said, juggling all the schedules. You know, there's two of us that are running different companies, and it gets to be a cat and mouse type of scenario or herding cats, because my schedule doesn't work with his, and his doesn't work with yours. But thank you for your patience, and I'm so looking forward to working with you guys even more closely this next year. So, Dave Vaughn, thank you for your time here with us the past 10 months. I wish you the very best in your future endeavors and hope you have all the success that you can find there. Shannon, the mayor said it so well. You're the rock. You're the constant. You're there. You take those phone calls and you keep us right within those bumper rails. So thank you for everything that you do. And Diana, thank you for not only being willing to serve as an interim, but thank you, after three tries now, that we've asked you, and everything is in timing. But thank you for accepting the role that I firmly think the position was meant for you. So I really do look forward to working with you this next year, and thank you. You know, I moved to Yuba City 30 years ago. Never thought, in the wildest dreams, I would be sitting in these chambers and at this dais. It's been former mayors, Cash Gill and others, that introduced me to the government here in Yuba City, because I spent a lot of my time either at the State House in Sacramento or DC with professional organizations. So it's been quite the journey. And it's definitely honoring to be here, because I never would have thought that, you know, a kid that grew up in South Alabama comes to California in the Air Force and ends up falling in love with the city and getting to serve. It is, it's amazing. I want to thank my parents who couldn't be here tonight. I know they're watching, so wherever the camera's at. Hi, Mom, Dad, stepmom, everybody, you're all there. Wish you guys were here, but I understand. My kids? This is a family affair, because, you know, my kids decided as of, you know, three years ago, that they're going to loan Dad to the city if the city would have him. So thanks for letting me serve, and thanks for being there. All the things you guys put up with and do, I really appreciate it. My wife? My constant? One thing about my wife and I is anything we do, we go, as Mark said, we give it everything we've got. And, you know, you get the two of us, whether you like it or not. We only get one check, though. Shannon, I was just checking. But, dear, would I never have started down this avenue if you hadn't said yes. And thank you for being my constant rock through everything. So hold on. Apparently, it's a different year. We need to talk to these two. You know, it's, really, you heard a lot tonight, and everything centers around relationship. And I want to talk to our council here real quick. And I want to thank you guys for the hard work that we've already done over the past three years. It's been tremendous, the thing that we have done, working together as a team with all of the employees of the city. And we've built great relationships amongst here. We can sit up here and philosophically or politically disagree on things, but it stays here. And we do it with great decorum and respect. And it's just amazing, and I just want to say thank you. Mark, I said a little bit earlier, but I definitely want to... I can't thank you enough for the things and the mentorship you've done this past year, because we have this morning meeting that just naturally occurred. We both stop at the same Starbucks. There's only 10 in town, but we both stop at the same one. So sometimes it's 10 seconds. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, how's it going? Good. Anything? No, we're good today. Okay, we're gone. Other times, it's like, hey, what's going on? Come here a minute. Then you're going, oh, boy. And then, as my wife noted, I'm at the office 8:15, 8:30. She calls it a Dave delay, so she knows something's going on. But, you know, your mentorship and, as Grace said, your inclusion and making sure the city came first this year is greatly appreciated. And I really appreciate everything you've done. Our city team, our E-Team, you guys rock. Cannot say enough about the leadership you have over all your departments. Some of you have only been in the departments a year or less, but you guys are already rock stars. You guys are doing the job and continuing on. The city has not missed a beat, and you guys continue to step up. So I definitely want to say thank you. And to all the employees, which I often refer to as our team, you're the glue of this city. You know, one of the greatest joys I've had during the last few years is being able to get out and spend time with the various departments and see what they do. And I will tell you, they are some of the best people I have ever met. And, you know, I've heard people say, you know, well, they only work here to here. I've watched these people give back till it hurts, you know? They go above and beyond. To them, it's not a job. It's a passion, and they love this city. So to our entire team, thank you for everything you've done, all the accomplishments we've done this past year together. And I'm looking forward to more coming up this next year. So now I'm getting on to, and I really got to hurry here. But I thought about what I was going to say. We've been going through a lot of things at our church lately with a study in Corinthians. And if you know anything about Bible, you know that the Apostle Paul wrote a lot of the New Testament. And I thought, you know, what would I say or what would he say to our council? And it would basically be, be of good cheer. Be encouraged, because you've already done a lot of good work. You're going to continue doing good work, and I'm going to challenge you. We've done a lot of things, and a lot of things have changed in the past three years. And I remember three years ago, coming in here, and at that time, Mayor Harris, because of the things going on, I would never forget one of the comments you made, and that was, the ego stopped at the door. And that set the tone from day one for the council. We had the privilege of having you as mayor for two years. Did a great job. Then we moved to Mayor Boomgarden, and he reminded us to control what we can control, and this city needs to be open for business. And the Business Retention Task Force, I appreciate it, but that was the former mayor. He just gave me the privilege of being on it. So tonight, I want to challenge and encourage us, as we found in the Bible, as Paul did. And there's four words that really come to mind. And you heard those earlier, and that's integrity, character, servitude, and humanity. And a lot of times, we sit here at the dais where people come in before us, and people either think, we know it all, or they think they know it all. And I just want to challenge us in the fact that Paul said in Corinthians, do not get puffed up with knowledge, meaning, don't get arrogant. Don't get to where you think you know everything. We're here to listen. And I guarantee you, I'll be the first one to tell you, I don't know everything about everything. Not a one of us up here does. It takes us collectively, the city team, the E-Team, the council, the public, to figure out what's the best course of action. So what we're looking forward to this next year, working together and listening and making sure that we form strategic partnerships, both public and private, focusing on business retention, the health of our citizens, we got the new blue zones. We know there's mental health issues out there. We've seen those because of COVID. We've got housing issues. And that's all housing, not just affordable, but all housing. And then job training. And one thing that Mayor Boomgarden did was lined us up with committees with our strengths and our talents. And one thing I saw at GSEC, how GSEC works with SECOG, and they're getting training centers going. training centers going. You have probably heard it on the news, the Aggie Square that's going in, in downtown Sacramento area. That's a joint effort between the agencies of GSEC and SECOG, and it's, it's really a great thing that's happening. We need to bring those here. We need to face every challenge head-on, and even though we got all the changes going on, we have the opportunity to embrace the future leadership with a brand-new city manager. She's had a lot of OJAT, but it's time that we seize those opportunities. We focus on what our primary responsibilities to the community are, which we've talked about during COVID, because so many people wanted so many things, but they were providing police and fire protection, safe drinking water, sewer service, and the infrastructure. Those are our priorities. We have a lot of opportunities ahead of us when it comes to all the money that's coming in with the CARES Act, the ARPA, and now the infrastructure bill. We gotta work collaboratively as a team, that has to continue. And that brings me to the point that you've already heard said earlier, kind of a lot of constant themes. But while I'm honored to sit in this chair, there is no team, or there's no I in team. This is a we, this is an us. We have to work as five plus 300, that's our team for the city, so it's a little over 300 people that we have to work together to serve this community. So with that, I want to challenge you with a couple of things. Want to challenge all of our residents in Yuba City, join us and the team here at the city and become part of the solution. Whatever the opportunity is, whatever the problem is, the obstacle, come on board and be part of the solution, and let's solve this. And to my fellow council members, I just want to encourage us, as we've seen in prior years, and it's not the history of this council, but we know that we've got a little thing coming up called the silly season, okay? And let's not be distracted by the silly season called election season. Let's keep all of that outside of 1201 Civic Center, and let's, let's continue to serve together with integrity, character, servitude, and with the utmost humility as we serve our great city. And I tell you, my, one of my prayers every day is that God will give us collectively the wisdom to lead, the patience to listen, as you did so well, Mr. Mayor, and I hope and pray that he'll bless our city and our homes here. And with that, I will wrap up unless there's anything else you guys have. So, on that note, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.